For the public, I just want to announce that the school board is already in session. We came out of a non-public, came into session, and then came here from the library. We've done the pledge of allegiance, so turning it over to the budget committee.
Okay.
Yeah. Just call us.
Just call and order.
Okay. Call to order the full budget committee?
All right. Let's do the pledge of allegiance again because it's on the agenda. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to call attendance. Pete or Jamie?
Tim, could you talk into your, hold your mic up? Can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, it's way over here. Is that better? I'm going to call attendance for the school board. Jamie?
Here.
Pete?
Here.
John?
Here.
Charlie?
Here.
Tammy?
Here.
Larry, I know you're here somewhere, I can't see you.
Yes, here.
Okay, and myself, present. Maury, if you want to.
Yeah, can I use that?
Yeah, there you go. Oh, sure.
All right, attendance for the school budget committee, Rick?
Here.
Vanessa went out to her cardigan, her laptop, Mary?
Here.
Annie?
Here.
Christine?
Here.
Jim?
Yep, present.
Anybody else missing? Is anybody else on Zoom? I can't see.
That's all.
So.
Chris, we have Tammy too, but she's school board tonight.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so can I get a motion on the minutes of October 21st?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Jamie?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Tammy?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Aye for myself, minutes are approved. Manifests are going around. No resignations. Tom, do you have any nominations?
I have one nomination, Dan Bertis for the position of STEAM teacher in a one-year position at Memorial School. We have a nomination for Dan Bertis, STEAM teacher at the Memorial School for a one-year position. I don't usually get told that people can't hear me, so that was kind of pleasant.
Can we get a motion on the nomination, please? Second?
Second.
And roll call vote, Jamie?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Tammy?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Aye for me. Committee reports. I didn't get a chance to check the list of the committees that have met. If you've got a committee report for the school board, would you raise your hand, please? All right, gentlemen.
So, finance, I reported out in the last meeting, but we had another meeting this evening. I'll get those minutes out, but generally speaking, we went through the revolving trust funds. We went through the.
Your spending. Can you hear him?
Testing, one, two, three. Now works? So, we went through the spending accounts, we went through the revolving trust accounts. We went through a number of follow-up items, including some grant issues and grant monies. And I'll get the official minutes out for the next meeting.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear any of that?
I thought it was soft.
Okay, let me try again.
That's good.
So, we went through the budget meetings, the budget spending, health, non-health issues, the revenues. We went through the revolving trust funds. We went through a number of different activities that are going on with grant funding, including some money that's becoming available to the tune of about $265,000 for us. Then Matt is already arranging funds to make sure that we can get the benefit of that. And we went through a number of open action items from the last meeting, and I will report out officially once I can get those minutes typed up. But that generally sums it up. Thanks.
Thank you. Tammy?
Reporting on the Excellence in Student Achievement Committee, we met on October 21st. And attendance were, we had quite a large attendance, mostly the administrators. And myself, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Ms. Dutton, Dr. Haynes, Bakey, Assistant Principal Cathell, Principal McCluskey, Principal, Middle School Principal Gerroger, High School Principal, Mr. Spack, Assistant High School Principal, Mr. Malilla, Title I Administrator, Kim Conant, Secondary Math Coordinator, Grace Evans, District Math Coordinator, Donna Donnell. And the administrators who were present at that meeting to provide us an update on the return to school and synchronous learning plan, which was to be implemented as of following week. During the first week, remote students will be doing largely independent work in order to allow the staff to focus on establishing routines for in-person learning. The administrators feel prepared for what can be known and ready to address any unexpected challenges. There will be a focus group of teachers to discuss synchronous learning with Ms. Guttermann and Dr. Haynes to support staff in that new learning model. Committee members all expressed appreciation for the administration's hard work and preparation, which I will say again tonight, since many of them are also here. Dr. Haynes reported on Alma, the new grade reporting system that is live with teachers inputting grades. The seven through 12 parent portal is open with K through six to come later. It's been a somewhat steep learning curve, but customer service has been responsive, they told us. Dr. Haynes also provided an update on assessments. The New Hampshire statewide assessment system, that's SAS, and NEWA assessments will now be administered in person and only remotely for remote students. Originally, they were planned to be all remote. Raw results should be available immediately, but they may take some time to be compiled and made widely available. Seniors took the SAT exam on October 14th, which they would normally take, that is juniors, but they couldn't take it last spring. There's no information yet on the target date for those results. Our next meeting date is two weeks from today, November 18th at 4:30.
I feel. Student council report, Jake?
Hi. We're holding a coat drive from now until November 18th, and there's a donation box in the main entrance for new or lightly used sanitized coats. And also, we are putting, the council members, we're putting together a Thanksgiving gift basket. I think it's to give to either Key Club or New Hampshire's high schools, whatever it's called. I forgot the name. Sorry, it's like Key Club, but it's for honor roll students. I don't know what it's called, sorry.
All set?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right, public comment, first public comment, you get a second one later in the meeting. If anybody wants to speak, please come up to the podium. Okay? Mr. Dawson?
Could I actually just ask that we flip these two agenda items so that the BudCon doesn't have to stay unless they want to?
Oh, okay.
For the athletic proposal? Would that be okay?
It's been suggested that we put these agenda items off until after the budget presentation.
I'll go back in my office.
If that's okay with the board, so that the BudCon doesn't have to stay beyond the budget presentation, unless they want to. So, if anybody has any objection to that, please speak up. Doesn't seem to, okay, so we'll go ahead with Tom with your presentation, thank you.
Tom, are we going to approve our?
Apologize to Mr. Dawson for stealing his thunder. I don't get to do that very often. So, first of all, I wanted to welcome the new BudCon members. Thank you very much for being here this evening. I'm sorry that we're in this space, it's not optimal. We have chosen to use this space for the social distancing component. We weren't sure how many people would be here, and we also thought that putting all of you on the stage would be tricky. So, we are, I asked someone to turn off the air. There's not enough people in here, we have plenty of air in here, but I asked them to turn it off for a few minutes because it's kind of loud, but just, could you give me a thumbs up? Can everyone hear me? Can everyone see the slides on their computer because this is not our normal setup?
No.
No, we don't have it.
Okay. Go to your, yeah, that is the slides. If you can see that, you're good. That picture right there is the slides. So, all you do is go into Zoom, go in your email, click on the Zoom link, and you should see that picture of one of our students. Just give me a thumbs up when you're ready, I don't want to rush anyone, it's cool. If you need a hand, we do have tech support here, too.
I'm waiting to be let in.
Okay, can you let everybody in? Yep.
How do you know?
So, go back to the line, can you open that? Oh, no, dear John, sorry, just your John.
All right. Everyone in the corner, have a good front row seat now. All right. You guys good over there? All set? Okay, just wanted to, no need to rush. Kind of the way things roll now, we have to take our time and get everyone settled in a way that we didn't used to. All right, thank you. So, we wanted to talk first about what's important in teaching and learning. Took a moment and worked with the admin team. I just wanted to thank all the administrators for all their hard work on this budget. And as you know, those of you who've been here before, the process is that we create a budget, share it with you, and then it really becomes your budget and your work to take a look at it. We really believe that the following four things are critical for the continuous improvement of student learning. The first is that you have to have an aligned curriculum. The second is that you have to have academic intervention. And the third is that we have to implement the best practices of teaching. And the fourth is you have to have a culture focused on student achievement for the whole child. It's really important to recognize that these are not in any particular numerical order, they're just a list. They are all equally important. So, if it were a circular pi, they would all have one quarter. This year, due COVID-related coverage needs. Sorry, I have to adjust my computer a little bit. Due to the COVID-related coverage needs, the intervention teachers have had to be assigned to teaching roles for this school year to cover for people who are out on various leaves. This budget proposal that you're going to see this evening fulfills the commitment that we made to the school board to review staffing needs and make reductions and increases after the reorganization has had time to settle. So, if you remember back to last September, people had a lot of questions about what was going to happen when the reorganization was through, and we said we need to get through the reorganization and then look at where we're really at, and then bring you a proposal based on that. And that's what this budget is. So, in the 21-22 school year, which is what this budget reflects, we will still be, I just want to be clear right from the beginning, the academic intervention program that was funded for grades pre-K through eight during the reorganization process is completely intact in the budget. Some of the positions are not currently filled due to the pandemic. We just, we weren't sure how much we would be in school. We weren't sure how long we'd be in school, it's very, very challenging. But we want everyone to know that all of that is still in the budget because that would be the first question I would ask as a parent in the district. So, in these slides, we color-coded things so that you could see what's going on. Items in green are reductions and blue are increases. The first increase is around the curriculum. We are, we will be having district accreditation next year. They did delay our accreditation due to the pandemic this year again. So, we are definitely going to be having accreditation next year, and that's an estimated cost of $20,000. And again, you can read the slide, I don't need to read it to you, but it's a comprehensive analysis. It takes a lot of time and effort to do accreditation. And we're very lucky because we're one of the few districts that I know of that has full district accreditation, not just the high school. It's very important to remember that. We've been looking at technology, specifically software. We reduced $60,000 in software. Couple of highlights are $6,500 for the migration of the financial accounting software from Profund to Infinite Visions. We reduced $20,000 migrating from Infinite Campus and Atlas Reconc to Alma. And that's our new student information system, which will take over more of the work next year on our software side. And we've been looking at our current year expenditures, and we basically have reduced the software and will continue to review usage to decide what we are and are not going to fund next year. There's also an information technology component, and Mr. Angel is going to propose that that is funded through the facilities use revolving fund. In special education, I asked Jody to look deeply at her budget now that we're reorganized and let me know what she thought she could do to create efficiencies. She is reducing four paraprofessionals positions for an amount of $184,000. She's eliminating a part-time speech position at the elementary schools for $40,600. And she has eliminated $215,500 of out-of-district cost supplies and contracted speech and language services, but she is asking to add a social worker for special education due to increased student need and hiring a speech and language assistant to pick up some of the speech and language components that she reduced in the first two items. Mr. Angel has worked hard since the consolidation to reduce the grounds and facilities component of our program. We've gone from five campuses to three. He reduced $7,000 by closing the grounds garage at the seminary, relocated those folks to the back of the high school, reduced $20,000 removing the seminary property from the budget, reduced $65,000 in grounds maintenance staffing, and reduced utilities costs by $54,000 district-wide. I have to say, Mr. Angel is a bandit about getting good prices for oil, he's really good at it. And other utilities, he's done a lot of work on that. Thank you, Mr. Angel. We did add a small amount for future discussion. The lower half of the church street property has come up for rent, and we would like to discuss that with the board, so it's currently in the budget but may not stay in the budget. We just want to talk about it. And I think that's roughly $20,000. We reduced $150,000 in health insurance. It's come in low for the last three years. We felt like it was a time to do that. We certainly recognize that health insurance is volatile and can be really challenging because people choose different elections from year to year in addition to the rates that are set by the insurance company. But consistently, that line has been over-budgeted, so we reduced it. And Matt did want me to put $20,000 in for transportation because the busing contract is up for bid, so he felt like just having a little bit of room for an increase there. It's an $850,000 contract, so I felt that $20,000 was a pretty reasonable amount to ask for for negotiating purposes. Doesn't mean we're going to spend it, it's just an estimate. So, this brings us to enrollments, which is the first thing that we look at when we budget, but I wanted to go through some of the overall things because the enrollments are really the big conversation tonight. So, if you look at these enrollments, if we moved this year forward with no reductions for teachers at any building, we would have class sizes of 16, 17, and 18 at Bakey, 20 at Memorial, 27 and 28 at the middle school, and 18 at the high school. So, what we did is we went through all the master schedules, looked at all the different buildings, had conversations about enrollments and current staffing, and came up with the following proposal. We will be reducing 8.5 teaching positions next year. There will be 6.5 teachers removed from the high school, and they will be reorganizing their master schedule to balance class sizes. And they will also be working in collaboration with the community to have a conversation about the about the 32-credit diploma versus 24 credits or 22 credits because what we're thinking is that in the future, we need to talk about the quality, of course, is not the gross number for the diploma. So, those three things will be worked on at the high school this year in preparation for next year. It is important to recognize that you have to phase in a change in the number of credits so that the current juniors and seniors don't get caught short or with too many. But that would be a conversation, it feels like a drone just took off, you know, like one of those little.
It's a shutter, it closed.
Okay, great, great. So, we will be having a lot of conversations about, I'll say it again, three things at the high school. The master schedule and balancing class sizes, the number of credits for the diploma, and we will also be having a conversation at the high school about the number of teachers, which is kind of co-joined with the master schedule, so it's all the same conversation. What happens is when you create a master schedule, there are organic imbalances. Sometimes you have, AP Biology might have eight kids in it, but what we're finding is that we need to really dig in and try to figure out ways to make the classes more even across the whole school. The middle school has had an influx of students move in due to COVID-19. It's interesting, they're at almost 27 or 28 per class, which is way above our projections. And what the principal has told me is that parents are telling her that they've moved here to get out of the city to bring their kids to Sandborne because of the pandemic, which is frankly, I've had that happen in my home community in Maine. It is happening in the coastal communities that folks are moving out of Boston and New York and coming here. I don't blame them, it's a great place to live. So, I think it was interesting because we had grade two and seven get a lot of students, really, really odd. Seven and eight in grade two. So, we are proposing an increase of two teachers at the middle school. So, we're actually reducing a total of 11, 11.5 positions, but we need to put two at the middle school. So, it comes out to be a net loss of 8.5 positions, and you'll see why in a moment. At Memorial, there are no reductions or increases, their numbers are steady. And in two years, unless we have another odd surge of people moving in, the middle school will come down again as well if you look across the grid. At Bakey, we'll be reducing a minimum of four staff positions due to decreased enrollments and program changes, but it's really important to recognize, when we calculated these numbers, we know of 30 students that homeschooled this year because of the pandemic. So, we are including them in our numbers. We also know of some students that didn't go to kindergarten that will probably come to first grade. They didn't homeschool because they never actually enrolled. So, we just want to be aware that those numbers can be a little tricky, but I feel confident in this for two reasons. One is that the reorganization has yielded a lot of efficiencies for the organization that were more than what we anticipated. But the second part is we have the contingency fund, so that if we have a bunch of kids move into one grade, we can hire a teacher. We didn't have that when I started working here, and that, we can't thank the taxpayers enough for continuing to build those contingencies because that's what allows us to do this kind of budgeting. It's really, if we were fully in-person at the middle school this year, I would have had to have hired at least one teacher out of contingency to manage the load of increased students at the middle school that was unanticipated. And that's the purpose of these contingencies. So, I'm just saying, great job, community, like that's exactly what we want. We want the money where it belongs, and when we need it, we use it, and we're very transparent about using it, and then we can budget tighter from year to year. So, overall, there are actually, I'm sorry, 10.5 positions with two added. And Jody did reduce four paraprofessionals to cover the special education staffing change that was outlined in slide seven, and that is the addition of her social worker. So, she took money from one area of her budget and applied that to cover that. The reason why I'm bringing this up is that you're going to see increases in some, we're trying to balance this budget out with the new organization. So, you're going to see increases in some lines and decreases in others, and we want you to know, we're trying to put the money where it belongs. And this is Matt's first year of building the budget from scratch, and he cursed the software and was very thankful that the district has agreed to purchase the new software for next year so that it can be a much smoother process for him. He did a great job with it, but certainly what we have for software, it's clear, is very, very clunky. As you all have experienced, as you try to look for things, the new software should be much, much better, and we are looking forward to that. So, here's how it comes out. I was trying to build suspense. So, after these reductions, we'll be looking at the high school having class sizes of 22. The middle school will come out around 22 or 23. Memorial will come out at 20. And Bakey will come out in kindergarten and pre-K around 17. The first grade will be at 20, which we're going to watch closely because we're a little bit wondering if those kids are all going to come that weren't in K. And so, that may go down or up. It's kind of, it's more like a kindergarten gas than normal due to COVID. Kindergarten's always hard to anticipate, and second and third grades will be at 21 and 19. If any of those spike up, then we will have to have a conversation about whether or not we need a position, but we feel comfortable moving forward. So, the summary of the operating budget is that the 2021 operating budget is $36,430,728. The proposed 21-22 operating budget is $35,430,284.28. It's a net difference of $1 million. I'm sorry, $1,443.72. The percentage difference is a decrease of 2.75%. So, there are some items that the board will need to discuss in the BudCon. If you look at this next slide, we did not include the following things because we feel like this is not the time to be adding things to the budget that aren't absolutely necessary. With COVID and everything that's going on, we wanted the board to have a conversation about these items. The first is the board would like us to look at a new math program for grades K through six. That would be a cost of $117,000, which is eight cents to Kingston and 10 cents to Newton. The board will need to decide if they want to add that to the budget. I have been saying for three years, we need books for reading for K through eight, and I wanted you to see that cost would be $80,000. Gordon has asked for Chromebooks for grades seven and nine, that's $40,000. And we do need to increase our professional development more, that would be $50,000. And then COVID costs for PPE is $100,000, and the information technology renewal is $100,000. Now, I want to be clear, not all of these are needed to open school next fall, but they're a part of our mission and vision in moving forward. If the board and BudCon choose to fund the math program next year, maybe we could use the money the following year to fund the books and professional development. We can talk about a graduated release, but I want everyone to know that this is not a wish list. This is a need list. We need to plan out carefully as a team, right, together, over the next few years. So, I wanted you all to know what's on this list, and I'm sure you'll have questions and your budget questions, and we will address those questions at the next meeting. So, I wanted to also say to people that in calling through all of these master schedules and looking at what is driving our class sizes and our class schedules, I noticed a trend, which is that the specialists, art, music, ed, EE, and other components of our schools have to meet all simultaneously so that teachers can have their professional learning time. That professional learning community time is the key ingredient to moving a school district forward. I cannot stress it enough, it is necessary. Currently, we have early release Wednesdays six times a year. As I continue to pare this budget down and create efficiencies financially, we're proposing that that be increased to 29 weeks or every five-week day. we're proposing that, that that be increased to 29 weeks or every five week day, week. If you have five days of school, no holidays, we have an early release day. If you have Columbus Day, there's no early release day. If you have Veterans Day, there's no early release day. And the purpose is that that allows us to have the teachers meet without having to provide that coverage, which allows us to adjust those master schedules and make things way more efficient. We, we have a lot of things going on between the district accreditation, and I'll talk about those a few more. And it's very possible that we will no longer need snow days because we can do remote learning days in the future. And that is certainly something that we're thinking is really important for continuity. One thing that's really hard about snow days is that students completely lose continuity. Especially like my first year when there were 11 of them. That was really hard, especially for the AP kids. So why early release days? These days provide time for professional learning communities to meet. The meetings give teachers time to analyze student work, determine areas that need focus, and enable them to plan instruction to meet student needs. It provides for multi-grade level collaboration, which is really important. So the way we do things now, some folks are getting multi-grade level collaboration and some aren't. When you have everyone early released at the same time, they can meet about science or math grades in a grade span instead of just at a level. That is one of the most important pieces. Curriculum-related professional development to improve math and ELA instruction and student outcomes, and training related to the implementation of new programs such as ALMA. All of these things take a tremendous amount of time to do well. Additionally, early release days would probably reduce the amount of money that we spend on subs for in-district professional development because a lot of times when we have professional developers come, we have to provide subs for teachers so that they can meet with those professional developers. We would focus that time on those Wednesdays. And it would allow, this is, this is really one of the most important things. Research is very clear that administrators being present in these meetings and having conversations about student learning and data changes student learning. If we do early releases, the administrators are not managing the students in the building. They're in the meetings talking about teaching and learning with teachers. And that's the most important piece from my perspective. We'll be able to facilitate the organization and management of the academic intervention program that the district has very graciously funded. And I just wanted to say that as a, as a mom or a dad, I would wonder, well, where, where are the kids going to be? And we certainly would have conversations about whether or not there'd be YMCA programming on those Wednesday afternoons or other afternoon programs for the kids so that they're not just out doing whatever. So we, we want to have a collaborative conversation about that. So I'm just going to take a minute now and talk about the default budget. The default budget is the same process that we've always used, same as last year. I'm not going to spend too much time on this. The, the prior year adopted operating budget was $36,430,728. Matt has created this slide for those of you who like to look at all the different levels. Staff reductions, debt service, transportation, tuition, and insurance. Reduction of $902,786.6. And so the default budget is $35,527,941.94. So the comparison of the two. The total budget for the default is $35,527,941.94. And the operating budget is $35,430,284.28. So 2.48% reduction. So the default is 2.48% lower and the operating is 2.75%. The estimated tax rate, local and state, per $1,000 of assessed value in Kingston for the default budget is $15.49. And in Newton is $20.55. If your home was assessed at $300,000, that'd be $4,647 in Kingston and $6,165 in Newton. The proposed operating budget, the estimated tax rate, local and state, per 1,000 of assessed value would be $15.43 in Kingston and $20.46 in Newton. And the estimated tax impact of a home assessed at $300,000 would be $4,629 in Kingston and $6,138 in Newton. So next steps. As you know, we don't take questions this evening. We need you to, to go over your budget books. Matt did ask everyone who wanted a, a, a physical book versus a, a, a digital book. And three people did request a physical book, and he printed those up for those people. And it's really important that everyone submit their questions from the Budcom to the Budcom chair by November 13th. And the Budcom chair will go through and get rid of the duplicates and then send us the, the, the individual questions. Matt will go through the school board questions and take out the duplicates and get the questions. And then we'll spend a week working on answers to your questions and present them to you at the board meeting on November 19th. Please remember that the majority of this budget is identical to last year. And we have created a, a link in here where you can review the questions that were asked last year so that we don't do repetitive questions. We know that people have a lot of questions and we want to answer them, but it does, it is a very time-consuming process. There was one year I did 134 slides or questions. I can't, it was a lot. I think it was, yeah, it was 134 questions and many, many, many slides. So it was before you, so that's why I'm nervous, Jamie. Thank you very much, everyone, for listening to this presentation, and we look forward to receiving your questions in about seven days.
Thank you, Tom. Dawson?
Budcom decided if they want to stay or go.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we approved the Budcom minutes of, what's the date? The 19th? As written?
Or the 15th?
The 15th.
15.
15.
15.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, so approve?
Thank you.
We need to have a, a roll call vote because we have a remote. We have Jim.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so a roll call vote to approve the Budcom minutes, correct? Uh, part winner?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. I, I'm.
Approved, yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Can you make a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
This is less fast. Well, hopefully I'm a fascinating person. So we wanted to talk a little bit tonight, apparently about, or you did, about winter athletics, so I'm happy to do that. Right now, we're in the very, very tail end of our fall athletic season. We have had a good season. All our teams made the playoffs, which of course happens. Didn't go as well as we might have liked in, in soccer and football. But, you know, they were, all, all the teams are very competitive, and I will, do want to point out that even though teams were clearly losing games at the end in some of those things, our kids, we didn't see any of the sort of nastiness you might see sometimes at the end of a game, and the kids played really hard right to the end. We have one additional football game coming up this weekend. I was able to talk the NHIA into letting us play a Thanksgiving Day game three weeks early, not on Thanksgiving. No, no, no. And we're, so we have Pembroke here at 1 o'clock on Saturday for sort of an extra football game. And our boys cross-country team qualified for the meet of champions on Saturday. And they'll be running at Mine Falls Park in Nashua. They finished fourth this past weekend, really third, because one of the teams that was ahead of us is a D1 team. Right? I know. I know them well. That, uh, in, in the state cross-country meet, the boys did, they did very, very well. So we did not have any positive cases, COVID cases during the course of the fall season. We had a whole lot of kids get tested because they would have a symptom or two. Parents were phenomenal about that. It was always sort of a groan on the other side of the phone when they had to go get their kid tested. But there was a ton of understanding. Several schools in southern New Hampshire had to cancel games or, in one case, the entire season was lost for an entire school community because the kids didn't take care of business. And whether lucky or smart, I don't know which one, but our kids did get through the season without having a problem or a shutdown or any positive cases on teams. Our teams are on teams we had recently played, so, you know, fingers crossed we make it through the next three days and that, that follows through. There's no question that there's a lot of huge benefit to athletic participation for our kids. And some of the things I'm recommending here are painful to say, but we do, our, we are trying very hard here to balance the safety of the kids versus the benefits of athletic competition. There was a recent change that you may or may not have noticed. It does play into what we're talking about here, at least what I'm recommending here. And that is that the CDC is now defining close contact not as X amount of time. I believe it was 10 minutes within six feet of an infected individual. It's now 15 minutes, but it can be sporadic. So it could be two minutes here and three minutes there and a minute there. When they add up to 15, you now have close contact. That changes things to some extent when you're dealing with athletics because there is a lot of that kind of contact between athletes on the same team and potentially athletes on other teams. So there is definitely still a risk involved in any of these activities. The NHIA recognizes sports based on levels, risk levels. So there's a higher risk, which for us would be spirit or cheerleading if they were going to do stunting and they were going to do a competitive routine, which is not our plan for the winter due to the small numbers of athletes that we have on that particular team. In the moderate risk category would be basketball and ice hockey. And the lower risk category would be track and field, although they're non-specific to indoor or outdoor in their recommendation. Swimming, bowling, and then the sideline variety of cheer where we might line the girls up here along the back of the gym and let them participate during the game. The NHIA has made basically six decisions or five for the year. They are recognizing all winter sports. They don't sponsor sports. They don't run sports. They just recognize them. So they let us play within the ages of what they do. They're waiving the minimum number of games they played. We were able to get quite a few games in this fall. Our final regular season field hockey game this year was our 12th. And we played a team, it's obviously our 11th, and we played a team that was playing their first game of the year, and it was the last day before the tournament. And I'm pretty sure they made the semifinals this week. The, they modified the dates for the winter seasons. So the earliest we're going to be able to practice any teams in the winter with just skills and drills would be the Monday after Thanksgiving. And part of the reason for that is to allow student athletes to travel. So a lot of people haven't seen their families for a long period of time, and if you make the choice to travel out of New England, when kids come back and need to quarantine from school and quarantine from sports, the overwhelming opinion of the athletic directors in New Hampshire was, we don't want to penalize those kids for the decisions of their families and have tryouts when they couldn't be there. Tryouts could start on December 14th. That's the Monday that in effect finishes that 14-day quarantine period for kids. We can run skills and drills in between. And the first day to play would be 14 days after December 28th, which is January 11th. So the first day of gameplay for the NHIA this winter will be January 11th for teams that choose to play. Once again, tournaments will be open, so if you play zero games in your season or you get 14 or 15 in, you can participate, and they haven't nailed down the end of the season date just yet, but they will do that. All of the governor's recommendations are still in place as far as sanitizing and wiping things down and physical distancing and so forth. So the problem really becomes, do we have a way to offer safe and appropriate opportunities for our student athletes this winter? And it was a little more broad in the fall, or really in August, when we talked about this the last time. I've gone sport by sport with what we offer here at Sandborne because I think there's a vast difference in some of the way that the sports line up. Just going alphabetically, basketball, basketball would be played in here, obviously for the high school level. And my belief is we'll be using Swayze Gym for all of the middle school practices and games at Swayze. Floor is being refinished starting on Monday. We would be spreading out our athletes over here in the bench area, much like if you watched any of the NBA games from down in Orlando. The, they spread the kids out. Spectators would be on the other side of the court. My recommendation would be that we play basketball. We allow two fans per, and we do a lot of social distancing and organizing. I was actually just writing that in my office just now to allow a lot of space. We're lucky in our gym that we have that space and we can allow the spectators. There are teams that we will probably play, such as Pelham, which has a very narrow space behind one side of their gym and all bleachers on the other side. I don't know if they're going to be able to accommodate any fans at all at that particular gym. I'm speaking for their A D. I don't want to do that, but it's just an example of one school. They may have a problem. There are several others that have the same kind of issue in their gym. But because we have an equally two-sided gym, I think we can do that here. And not only allow our own fans to be here, but allow the other teams' fans. We probably would, obviously, master required. There'd be assigned seats. We would push the bleachers back for spectators. We might not let them in until five or 10 minutes before the start of the actual game, not during warm-up. And as soon as the game's over, out you go. Student athletes would be not changing here. Our kids or the visiting kids wouldn't be changing. Those kind of things we would put in place to try to keep it as safe as we could for basketball. In effect, the contact between the two teams would be limited to the time on the court during the game. And we just got some of the considerations and changes for basketball from the state, which aren't terribly dramatic. The biggest one is they don't have to wear mouth guards this year, which is going to make them all very, very happy that they don't have to. So I would recommend that we play basketball. Bowling, we do have a bowling team that uses the Strikers East facility up in Raymond. They haven't come out with the recommendations from the NHIA. I feel like we can more than likely maintain a safe environment for kids. I would recommend that we bowl completely masked up at all times because they are in an indoor space. It is relatively small, usually low roofs and things like that. So I would say we should, we'd be able to participate. Obviously, with bowling centers being private businesses, we have some concerns about their protocols. And I would want to meet with the people at that facility and make sure that what they're doing is in line with what we feel is comfortable. I haven't done that yet. Because I wanted to talk to you first. Cheer and spirit, I talked about that a little bit. My recommendation was that we would just participate with the kids doing sideline cheer. This helps us with two things, less contact. They can be masked up all during practice and all during games. And we can also have them practice really anywhere in the facility. We can use the cafeteria. We can use the area in the atrium out front. They can use a lot of different spaces because they don't need the vertical space that a cheer routine would require. And since we don't really have the mini gym because it's a cafeteria right now, and the gym will be occupied by our teams, that helps us with some practice space. So I recommend that they only participate in sideline cheer and that their parents be included in our spectator list for game time. Ice hockey, ice hockey has been, without question, the most challenging decision I had to make. It's also been an area where there's been a, at least two different times where the governor and the state of New Hampshire has shut down hockey in New Hampshire, ice hockey. There are, you know, there's numbers in the report that you guys have seen to talk about the number of infections that have come directly out of ice hockey in New Hampshire. At least 158 people have been connected to, or have been infected with COVID that can be related to ice hockey in New Hampshire. One of my biggest concerns with ice hockey is the bench area. The bench in a hockey rink and without modifications is a three-sided plexiglass box that you put 14 players in in between shifts. They're sitting shoulder to shoulder and breathing heavily after a shift. It doesn't seem terribly ideal to me, and it really worries me about that. There is some talk about using a more significant face shield for the athletes and using something called a spit guard, which is an addition, that's a lovely term, but it's an addition to the face mask that's attached on the inside of the face mask. Now, the National Federation of High Schools has said that's okay. The state of New Hampshire, NHIA Ice Hockey Committee has said they're okay. But the last time I looked, the certification industry standard for ice hockey helmets says if you attach anything to the helmet that is not specifically approved by them, the hockey helmet then becomes uncertified. And with an uncertified helmet, our, our coaches are asked before a game, are your athletes all properly prepared? And our coaches would have to say no. We would also, I believe, put ourselves at a huge liability risk if a student athlete were injured, in particular a head injury, during a game wearing an uncertified helmet. So I don't think those spit guards are something that we can condone as of November 4th, 2020, at 7 o'clock at night. That may change over time, and they may get that certification, but the last time I looked, they did not have that certification. So because of that and the close contact and those, you know, a bunch of other reasons like that, it is not my recommendation that we play ice hockey this year. I would recommend that we suspend the season until we can get to the point where the season until we can get to the point where we feel comfortable playing hockey as conditions change one way or the other. We may not get to the point where we're comfortable playing hockey this year. And I personally am not comfortable with us participating in that particular sport right now because I haven't seen anything that tells me that that's a safe sport right now because of the level of contact and particular athletes coming off the ice, aerobically heavy breathing, sitting right next to other athletes on the bench area. We do have several athletes that swim competitively, which warms the swimmer's heart in me. One young lad goes up to Exeter and a couple of girls, I believe, swim at Timberlane. I have not seen any considerations or guidelines about practice. They're talking about spreading meets out. They're talking about virtual swim meets for competing athletes in swimming and diving. My concern with swimming practice is you tend to, you know, bunch up at the end of the, of the pool. I did it for 10, 15 years myself. And you all stand around with about six people after doing a set and wait. I've heard about teams spreading the kids out and finding ways. Right now, I'm not ready to make a recommendation one way or the other on swimming until I hear more and until I have a chance to consult with the athletic director at Exeter where our young lad swims and the one at Timberlane and the coaches there to find out how they're going to handle practice. It's possible. I will tell you, if you're into a swim meet, you know, everybody jams in the pool. It's a hot environment. Everybody's on top of each other and it's a big problem there. But if they do virtual meets and some other things, we may be able to compete or may not. But my biggest concern there is practice time. So I would ask to defer that particular decision to a later date. Track and field. We do indoor. It is listed as a low contact sport, but if you've ever been to an indoor track meet, you know full well that what happens at indoor track is you've got a tremendous number of athletes, usually six to 20 teams all in one area. And the kids in between events are literally, actually sitting on top of each other in there. Because of that and because of the needs of the colleges where the meets are held, we are told now at this point that UNH in Durham and Plymouth State and Dartmouth are not going to be allowing any high school competition or practices in their facilities this winter. That basically eliminates any chance for us to compete because we're Massachusetts. There's no indication they're going to allow any, like, anything like that to happen either. Nobody I've talked to has any optimism that we can do that. And as such, our ability to compete is going to be extremely limited. I did speak with the athletic director at a high school in the western part of, well, actually at South Eagan, I'll just say who it was today. They're looking to do some meets and compete potentially at the Hampshire Dome. But for us to go over there on a regular basis and practice or even for a meet would require us to take probably some of the name of four buses and rent their facility for a couple hours at a couple hundred bucks of whack. It's about, it would probably cost us almost on the borderline of $2,000 to just make that trip for an indoor track meet. And the regularity of doing that is going to be very difficult. We also have an issue here in the facility on cold weather days of where to practice. Gym's going to be occupied. Mini-gym isn't there. I guess you could run around the cafeteria with the low ceiling. Nothing's good. There's no good way to do that. So my proposal is going to be, and it's not specifically laid out in here, would be to do skills and drills and allow our coaches to work with our kids as much as is practical, in particular in our running sports, over the course of the winter to in effect create a long preseason for outdoor track. And as the area outside becomes more available, we would apply with the NHIA for a preseason skills and drills type of workouts, which will basically be the same thing we would do prior to our meet season and basically start outdoor track as early as we can get ourselves onto our physical track outside, running around the facility here with some safety protocols put in place and so forth. So that's the recommendation I have for you tonight, and I welcome your questions.
Bob, I know you said the spit guards have to be approved. So since Bauer is the one that makes the spit guard, if it is used in a Bauer shield or cage, is it then considered approved?
The last time I looked at the Hockey Equipment Certification Council website, they have not approved any devices to be worn in conjunction with already previously approved masks for ice hockey. So it is my understanding, if I read that correctly, and I'm no attorney, okay, is that if you attach anything to that helmet, you know, you can attach a mouth guard to it, but if you attach anything that changes the helmet itself, it voids the certification on the helmet.
Okay. So what about the, so does that include the new masks that CCM just came out with?
Since I have no idea what those are, I wouldn't know, but I would check. They have a list of all the approved equipment on the H E C C dot org website, which is linked in the document. And you can certainly go take a look at that.
On that same subject, what would your recommend, how much would your recommendation change were these spit guards or these pieces of equipment allowed, if it turned out they were not going to void the warranties on the helmets, would that change your recommendation?
It would not. No.
Because of the...
Well, here's the issue. The problem I have with this, the athletes still have to breathe. So you can't just create, you know, it's like you can't dome the kids, the players' head, if you will, and face and not allow them to breathe at all. And a hockey game, you're talking a 45-second to a one-minute shift. You're going to the bench. You're sitting usually immediately next to another person. The recommendations from the NHIA talk about maintaining a six-foot distance on the bench for all personnel. I'm not sure what personnel means. It's, it's a word that they use multiple times in multiple documents. They refer to the bench personnel in basketball, and that implies all the athletes as well. I don't know how in the world you keep a six-foot distance on a hockey bench. If you've ever been to Exeter, the rinks at Exeter, Exeter Academy has a pretty big bench area, but even maintaining six feet there is going to be very difficult. And because of the nature of the sport where athletes are going on and off the ice with, without, not during a timeout or a break in play, they're jumping over the boards. They're on top of each other constantly at the bench, especially during a time when they are breathing very heavily. And if you then say, I'm going to put a mask on a kid and I'm going to completely cover their head with a plastic shield, it's, it's not working for me. I'm just, it's just my opinion. I just don't see it as being a safe environment for the kids. For, you're either going to suffocate them or you're going to expose them. And that's, I'm not, I'm not comfortable recommending that we play hockey for that. That's, that's really my biggest reason right there. So, use example of basketball, okay? So on the court, we've got 12 player or 10 players on this large court. Now, they are definitely packed in together. They're playing side by side with other athletes, okay? When they, and that's true of a hockey game as well. You've got basically 12, let's take the goalies out of the equation and put the 10 kids on the, on the ice at the same time. And they tend to play in one end of the rink and they zip down to the other end and play that. In between shifts of a basketball, I pull an athlete off the court. My plan here, and I think other athletic directors are going to do the same thing, is to spread out the kids across the area. I would put individual labels on each chair so that number 13 has her seat here and number 24 is over here and number 27 is over there. So they have their individual place to go and recover. After that short recovery period, they'd be masked up like we've done for our outdoor sports. And so that it, you eliminate as much of that as you possibly can. In hockey, when they come off, the physical distancing is something that's going to be very, very difficult, in my opinion, for them to maintain. So that's, that's really the difference. The playing court, there is definitely a risk on the playing court. I'm a little disappointed that they weren't more creative with basketball, to be honest with you. I really thought like for a free throw, I was kind of hoping that they wouldn't allow the defensive or the offensive team to stand under the hoop at a free throw. Just let the defensive team have the rebound. They get them most of the time anyway. That would eliminate a lot of close contact between athletes when they're breathing heavily. They weren't quite that creative, which I think is unfortunate, but that is what they decided. So that, you know, I don't even come and keep coming back to it, but I can separate the kids on the bench in basketball. I can separate them in bowling as far as I know. I just can't get around how to do that in ice hockey.
I know Bob loves me because I'm the crazy hockey mom.
Ask whatever you want. It's okay.
No, so I was just wondering if you had thought about what USA Hockey is doing, which is when available, they are having the players, because there's typically, you know, 15 players, you know, five people on the ice at a time. So then 10 other players. So a lot of times what they'll do is they'll have, you know, say five on the bench and then the line that's going after them, they actually, if available, will sit out behind the bench on like a bleacher or whatnot. That's something that USA Hockey has put into place to try and help with spacing.
Yeah. I haven't seen that. One of the difficulties, A with the shutdown and B because the rinks are so closely locked up. I'm not sure how we'd go see something like that. My history has been rinks at Exeter, which has bleachers, the fan area right behind. It's a box. The Ice Center in Salem is much that way. Haven't been to the Hooks at Rank in a long time, but I think, you know, and with the, a high school team would be 20 players in typical. So you'd have 15 kids or 14 kids that wouldn't be on the ice at any one particular time. Couple of coaches, our athletic trainer, we got to think about her as well because I'm hoping to have her as many games as possible. I'm, like anything else, I'm being, I'm willing to be convinced otherwise.
And I'm not going to lie to you. I'm not sold on high school hockey either because it is Sanborn and Epping.
Yep.
So that's two cohorts right there.
Yep.
Coming together. But I'm just trying to ask all the questions to make sure that we think about everything.
Yep. I mean, you know, I, I wanted to play, but it's threading the needle of making it safe. And I'm having, you know, it's hard to turn down 80 kids who want to run indoor track.
Right.
That's, you know, it's killer. But find me a good way to do it where they're not, you know, you can't do sprints in the parking lot in a sandy parking lot in February. It's not safe.
I'm just curious if you've spoken with the hockey boosters and what their position is on this?
You'd have to ask them if they're watching at home right now, but
Okay.
I don't know.
It may turn out to be easier on them because they have probably not had a lot of opportunity for fundraising to raise money for their ice time. So I was wondering.
I mean, I talked to them earlier this year. My understanding is they're, they're in reasonably good shape on doing their fundraising. One thing of a late start is less ice time rentals. And there's also, by the way, no guarantee I can get ice time because right now the ice time we have is reserved at Phillips Exeter, starting in January, perfect timing. But if Phillips Exeter says, yeah, no, then we're in trouble because I can't go to April because they're not going to rent me any ice in another state. That's just not going to happen. That's what I understand from hockey people. Nobody will do that. So we're going to be scrambling big time for ice. So that could be another whole problem. It could be 3:00 in the morning we're practicing. I don't know. But the hockey boosters, I can't imagine are happy with that, but I certainly hope everybody respects the decision, you know, my recommendation, not my decision.
Well, what I was thinking is, a couple things. We could have, and do that, or we could not do his presentation because the BudCon might want to hear that, and then go to public comment and then have a vote on or a motion on Mr. Dawson's proposal. Let me ask you, how many of you have comments about the hot, what you just heard on the hockey, or the athletics presentation that you want to speak about?
I think they're going to hear you, so.
I heard you. I have no interest to make any comments.
Kevin Holt, Kingston. My only question was, when you were talking about indoor track, you mentioned Plymouth State, UNH and Dartmouth. Has PEA offered their track for any meets?
That's a good question. I assume, I don't believe that high schools have used Phillips Exeter in the past for that purpose. And I believe, just using logic in my head and knowing what I do, that first, they're not going to offer any of their facilities till the second week in January. I already know that. And secondly, there's going to be a huge demand, in my opinion, from the colleges to use their facility. And they have the coin to do it. So I can call them and check, but I'm fairly certain we're not going to be able to get some access into that particular track. There's a huge demand for that facility, including their own kids, because their kids would be looking for the track at the same time that we do where the colleges can get there earlier or go much later at night and access that. But I have happened to have a former UMass Lowell track athlete in my house and they wanted to use that all last year and they couldn't get in it before the pandemic. So I think that's going to be problematic with Exeter. I don't think that's going to be an option.
I just wanted to know if any of the large high schools around have big indoor track areas that might be able to kind of be teamed up and maybe used and also ice hockey. I don't know if, you know, Pinkerton, for instance, does it have an ice hockey rink? I don't know.
They do not. No, there are no, I didn't say no. There are none, no high schools that I'm aware of in New Hampshire have their own ice sheets. There's a whole bunch in Massachusetts, but not here. They normally would use a town rink. The ones that we've used around here are, I believe, all privately owned facilities other than Phillips Exeter. So the, the options are limited on ice. Getting the ice is actually not as big a problem. Right now, I'm already booked for game days, practice days. I've got that all covered starting the first week in January. So we're, we're okay there. We're not, I'd like to get the kids started earlier if I can, if that's what we're going to do. But we're, actually ice time is not the biggest problem we have. In fact, of all the places that I'm aware of to play a game, that's probably the best situation that I've seen because their bench areas are big.
Vanessa, you're next.
Just in terms of, you know, you made a comment for track, you know, the kids are inside often on top of each other. I mean, I'm sure that there's something that they could do with walkie-talkies where groups stay outside, whether it be in their bussers or whatever they need to do, and then just come in for the appropriate, you know, activity that they're, they're in there for as opposed to everybody clamoring in this one facility, you know. So, I mean, and then maybe the possibility of, you know, parents or carpooling or something like that as opposed to busing and busing funding was a problem. I just hate to disqualify something without trying to work up a workaround or give the option of workarounds.
Yeah, the, there's two issues with the colleges. It's not the safety of the meet. I believe what's happening at UNH and several of the other colleges as well is they're compacting their entire fall athletic season into the spring. So their soccer teams and things like that will be playing in spring season. That puts a huge demand on any large indoor space in the college facilities. The, the track season is usually over, second week of February. They're usually done pretty early. So they have basically told the NHIA straight up they will not. The NHIA actually kind of run, there's an indoor track league that the NHIA organizes the meets. And there, we're being told there will be no access for the high schools in the colleges at all. So that, that option is off the table. The only facility I'm aware of in New Hampshire big enough to hold the track meet is the Hampshire Dome in Milford. And that is being used by other high schools and I could reach out to them. But in doing the math this afternoon, I can only put 24 students on a bus. I'm going to need to, you know, have four, potentially five buses to go over there at $400 apiece. But we can do that two days a week. But it's, you know, my budget's in bad enough shape right now from all this stuff I had to spend money on and buses this, this fall. It's going to, you know, that's going to be, and that's just going to be if I can get there.
Can I ask a follow-on question?
Sure.
Is there a restriction in terms of, you know, where the kids can play, like there is now, like a radio zone? Is that still intact?
Actually, I didn't even write that in here. I guess it was sort of an assumption I had in my head that we would stay within roughly 25 miles to 45-minute radius. We were a little bit outside that a couple times this year to get some games in, not too much. I think like Manchester West was like 25.2 miles, so I didn't freak out about that. We did go to Milford, which is a little farther than I would have liked. But, you know, as trying to get the kid, the games in for the kids, we did, you know, like the boy soccer team was like 26 kids. We didn't put 26 in the bus. I got two buses to try to spread the students out. So it would definitely be, and we've already done some preliminary talks about basketball, about playing regionally both. And this also includes basketball at the middle school level. And it would be even more sort of hyper-regional for middle school where it'd be, you know, Epping and New Market and Hampstead and Timberlane and people like that.
I was just wondering if there was a way to bifurcate the situation and approve the sports that Bob's comfortable recommending. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, when I ask you for new equipment for the auditorium, I want you to remember this moment. Thank you. I, I just think that it might be possible to bifurcate the situation and have approved the sports that Bob is saying to approve and then do a little more homework for the other two sports that we want to talk about because what we want is for the kids to participate. And the part that some of the parents here from the BudCon might not know is that the busing is, is an incredible sum of money. Because we, if you have a team of 50 kids, you have to run buses, double the buses for everything. So it's, it's super complicated. And I just wanted to take a minute and thank Bob for everything that he's done because, agree or disagree, Bob is just working non-stop to try to manage what really is truly almost an impossible task. So thanks, Bob. So thanks, Bob.
And fun.
One more question for you. For basketball, typically, we run a total of six teams at the high school, Boys and Girls Varsity, Boys and Girls JV, and Boys and Girls Reserve.
Yep.
Are you thinking about cutting down the number of teams to four to help? Because we have to do so much busing. Is that, is that something that you're thinking about, is cutting, maybe cutting off reserve this year to?
I'm hoping not to. Because it's such a relatively small number of kids in a basketball team, I, my brain right now is telling me to, for freshmen or reserve, there's occasionally upper, you know, non-freshmen on the reserve team, our third team, if you will. Practice would probably be 2:25 PM in this room with the divider down, double-sided. Because of that, because those kids usually need transportation, they don't have the way to get back. I want to get them in right away. And we have to, I have to figure out a way to get the middle school kids over to Swayze for practice as well. So I've got to talk to the, you know, think about where we are with that if we do that. Those teams would probably be 10 to 12 athletes at a time, to try to keep the critical mass in this room down to a certain number. And then we would probably go JV only, varsity only. I think I mentioned it here, I'm sure, I'm sure I do, but I'm not recommending we allow players to swing. And by swing, what that means is players will sometimes be on the varsity roster, but to get playing time, they play the JV game, and then they would come up and play the varsity game. We wouldn't do that. I have spoken to both of my varsity coaches, and they're good with that. The girls' varsity coach doesn't do that anyway, and I, and I think the varsity boys' coach only does it occasionally. If we had a kid really knocking out of the park because of JV, we might hop that kid up to the team, but that'd be like a one-time, you know, like going remote, you go remote, you're gone. So once you switch, you switch. And that would limit us then to, it would be 15 probably on those rosters, it'd be 15 in the gym, plus a couple of coaches, Jen, our trainer, it'd be limiting that number here. So I don't want to limit it, because we're already limiting so much, and I'm trying to kind of thread that needle to make it work. Where the middle school teams, probably practices might not be as often as we would like, where it could be a situation where the girls are practicing Monday, probably Thursday, and the boys are practicing Tuesday, Friday, stay away from Wednesday, because it's transportation difficulty for the parents. And I might try to get game schedule on Wednesday, so we can get them out, you know, see if we can get the teams out of here on time. Those sort of creativity, creative ways of looking at things are what I'm looking at. And the other thing we can do with busing is if we do play a freshman JV varsity in a row, we can do that with two buses, not three. If I, if you get a little creative on who goes when, because we'll send the freshmen and some of the JV kids in the first bus, and then they, you know, the JV kids come back, and you try to do it that way to make it work. This is what I do when I'm driving back and forth to school in the morning, I think about this stuff.
Anybody else? Okay, so, we can make a motion to approve Bob's entire proposal, or we could take up on suggestion, which would be to approve the ones that were recommended, to go ahead with, and look further into the ones he hasn't recommended. So how would the board like to, if you want to discuss that? Does anybody have any comments? Don?
I like the idea of, you know, approving what Bob has approved, and then doing a little more research, getting more information before determining the best course of action for the other sports.
Anybody else?
I'm fine with that. I mean, I've been rather quiet through this, but I, trying to think through, I can't find, I can't find arguments with what Bob has said. I mean, I've been in both sport sets, and I just don't have an answer. But I'm in favor of recommending, voting on what he recommended, and if there's something that we can come up with in between, that's fine, but I don't know what it's going to be. So I'm okay with the idea.
I just wanted to say, this is really, really hard, and I...
I'm nervous about hockey, so I would like to hear if there's more, just because there have been events that actually went all the way from where I live in Saco, Maine, all the way down the coast, down through here, and caused almost our schools to close in Maine for the same group of kids that had issues in New Hampshire. But Dawn, I know that this is an area of passion for you, and if there is a solution, I want to hear it.
So I just want to be clear that I'm nervous.
Right.
But I'm open.
Right.
Right? For the kids.
And I'm nervous as well, because, you know, obviously, you know, my daughter plays hockey, but we also kept her remote, so she wouldn't have an impact on her classmates.
Right.
Just in case there was an exposure. You know, that was one of our reasons for doing that.
Yeah.
You know, and when it comes to our hockey team, you know, I don't want to cut them short, I don't want to sell them short, so that's why I'd like to do some more research, because not only are they teaming up with Epping, but I'm guessing the majority of them are also doing a split season, which means they play for another team as well. So that's a lot of cohorts, if you will.
Cross, cross, I don't want to say continuation, cross grouping or...
Yeah.
Cohorts, lots of cohorts.
Lots of cohorts mixing together, so that's why I'd like to, you know, before we determine, know, you know, I'd like to, you know, do a little more research, get a little more information. Same thing with, you know, any of the other ones that were, you know, maybe a no-go, just to make sure that we're making the right decision and decisions that we're really comfortable with, and we feel that we, you know, truly, you know, understand everything. So...
So are you going to make a motion to that effect?
I guess I will make a motion that we approve the sports that Mr. Dawson has recommended we approve, and we will revisit the sports that he did not recommend for approval at this time.
I'll second that. Need just further discussion? Hey, roll call vote. Jamie?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Tammy?
Larry?
Aye.
What you got, Larry?
I, I'm still awake.
Is that yes?
That was a yes.
Okay. Yes for me. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
So, budget calendar, Matt?
Okay, I believe in your packet you have the budget calendar. I tried to, I tried to ask both the school board and the budget committee to move some dates back to try to open up some free time in January, but unfortunately, I was made aware of a particular statute that says that the petition warrant articles have to come on the second Tuesday of January. So that's January 12th, you can't push those dates back. So for, like, January, so you would have to have, I think you could push your public hearing back to January 12th as well for the budget committee. But what I proposed is, is to have the petition warrant articles closed on January 12th, and then the budget hearing on January 14th.
So are you asking the board and BudCon to approve having the petition one articles due on the 12th and have the BudCon hearing the evening of the 12th, or are you proposing the 12th and the 14th again?
Aye.
I wasn't sure, I just didn't understand.
I think I would leave it up to the budget committee on whether they want to move it to the 12th. I put down on the calendar what was originally stated, so I'm not surprising anybody.
So the board would have to vote to have the hearing on the 12th, and then the BudCon would vote, right? Is that the process?
I believe it's the budget committee's hearing. So, and I know some of the budget committee members have wanted to apply on their portion of the calendar.
Okay.
We adjourned?
Yeah.
Can we, can we reconvene, or would that need another public notice?
I think that it would be okay, from a process perspective, for the school board to agree that the warrant articles would be due on the 12th, and then at the next meeting, you guys can just affirm if you don't want to reconvene again. I mean, it's kind of, sorry, it's, we didn't, I didn't think of, I'm sorry. We should have... I don't know, Annie, I'm trying to be helpful here. I don't, I don't think it will matter either way, because it will be public far, long enough.
You're just talking about moving it one day, right?
It's one, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think you'll probably get agreement from our committee, but we're not in official session, so we can't really do that.
Yeah, I may need a lot of time to think about that. Right, right. Glad to hear it. Thank you for being so conscious about it.
All right, so what was the day you needed moved, Matt?
Let's see, the petition warrant articles would be January 12th, and then the budget hearing would be January 14th, unless the budget committee wants it earlier. I think, I think you can go as early for the public hearing, as early as January 12th, but it would be kind of awkward to go any, any time before that.
Do the, does the budget committee have to present the petition warrant articles?
No, but I think it would give them an opportunity to, for the public hearing to, or for the public to also give their blessing, or discuss the petition warrant articles at a public meeting.
If they're due before the hearing?
Yes.
So basically, worst-case scenario is Tuesday afternoon at 5:00, someone drops off a petition warrant article. Matt has to pull together a slide and bring it to the meeting at 7:00, right? That would be the, if it's, if they're both on the 12th, the likelihood that someone's going to drop off a petition warrant article on the 12th at 5:00 is very low, but if it occurred, Matt would have to prepare a slide and present it that evening. I don't think there's any problem with that, but that's, that's the rub. The converse situation is if it's on Thursday, the 14th, which is perfectly fine, the snow day situation gets a little bit weird, and with COVID and everything, I was a little bit nervous about having it be that tight to the following Tuesday over a three-day weekend. I don't really love the idea of having a public hearing if there's a snow day or a COVID situation on Thursday. Having it on a Friday night, it just doesn't feel, on the Friday night of a holiday weekend just doesn't feel as transparent to me. It's fine, but I'm just saying that if you do it on Tuesday, then you have a couple more days to do it if we have a problem. And in light of everything that's going on around us right now, public hearings get tricky. We're going to have, we just got a notice from the NHSBA about a, they're doing webinars on how to effectively have town meeting this year, because we don't, we were lucky last year, we had a town meeting right before everything went remote. This year, we're not going to be in that situation, but luckily, we also have time to plan for it. But, I mean, people were having drive-in town meetings last year, right? And like, beeping their horns. I mean, it was, it's not optimal. So I just want everyone to know that, I'm just trying to consider all the different variables that could put us in a pinch, and the first pinch would be if someone drops it off at 5:00, we have to prepare a slide for that evening. Do we want that, or do we want more of a calendar pinch? It's kind of up to you as a group, but we're here to support you.
So what if we propose the change for petition warrant articles to January 12th, and the hearing January 14th or earlier, subject to approval by the budget committee?
Perfect, that is perfect.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jamie?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Tammy?
Yes.
Larry?
Larry.
Yes.
Sorry, Larry.
You got that right.
Does anybody, we had public comment about the athletics, does anybody have any public comment about anything else? Okay. So the next meeting, board, if you have agenda items, please get them in by the Thursday before. The next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be a joint meeting with the budget committee, held on Thursday, November 19th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the gymnasium at Sanborn Regional High School, 17 Danville Road, Kingston. To view the meeting remotely, see the links at the www.sau17.net. And we need to go into a non-public session.
And we'll go back to the library for that.
Okay.
So if we could have someone move us to non-public, we can migrate to the library.
So we're, we're not adjourning, but we're moving to the library for a non-public session,